Ladies and gentlemen, can the meeting come to order, please? Please turn off your cell phones or pagers. Except Mr. Greenspan. He has an exception.
We're getting close.
Okay. The meeting will come to order. This is the work session of the Cuyahoga County Council, scheduled for Tuesday, March the 8th. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Calling the roll, Mr. Miller.
Present.
Mr. Brady. Mr. Germana.
Here.
Pluger.
Here.
Mr. Schron.
Ms. Conwell.
Mr. Jones. Ms. Conley.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Simon. There is a quorum.
All right, thank you.
Oh, Mr. Greenspan, I'm so sorry.
All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're here for our weekly work session, so that we can discuss matters prior to our meeting, and we have some presentations today. I'm going to go out of order from our agenda, from our scheduled agenda. We will be approving or hopefully confirming at our 6:00 meeting members of the Cuyahoga County Human Resource Commission, which is a new creation under the charter, under Section 901, who will be handling all of our personnel matters. And these persons have been appointed by the county executive and are subject to confirmation by the council. And so I'd like to call each one of them forward and give them a couple minutes just to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested and why are you taking on this task? So in order of appointment, Mr. Robert Wolf, who is appointed the term commencing March the 8th, 2011, to March the 7th, 2017.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman. Good afternoon, members of council.
And why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this position?
I'd be delighted to. Thank you for having me here. I'm very excited to be part of our collaborative efforts to redefine our county government. It's a very, very exciting time. I'm an employment lawyer. I work here in town for the firm of Littler Mendelson, and I represent employers in a wide array of matters involving the employment relationship, including counseling and including litigation. I began my career in 1980, when I moved into this area, at Squire Sanders and Dempsey. After a couple of years, I went to the City of Cleveland Law Department, where I remained from 1982, gee, to 1989, I believe. And my last several years there, I was the chief labor and employment lawyer for the City of Cleveland, and spent quite a bit of time dealing with issues involving the Cleveland Civil Service Commission and other public sector employment-related issues. I joined what was then the Duvern, Kahn, and Hutton Firm in 1989, became a shareholder, I think, in 1991, and became the managing partner of the firm a few years thereafter. We merged with the National Labor and Relations Firm of Littler Mendelson in 2007, and became their Cleveland office. In my private practice, I continue to represent a lot of public sector bodies and employment-related matters, including I have represented Cuyahoga County, Geogee County, Solon, Shaker Heights, Metro Health Hospital, the RTA, and a variety of other public sector employers. I have three children. They're all out of the nest now. My youngest just began college. My wife is a physician at University Hospitals of Cleveland. I live in Shaker Heights. And I am very excited to start on what is essentially a clean slate, to help, in collaboration with the council and the administration, to create rules ensuring merit and fitness of our county employees and consistency in the application of those rules. It's a challenge, and I'm very excited to meet the challenge with my other members of the commission.
All right, thank you. She's a member of my district, District 9.
I am.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
The second nominee is Ms. Angela Simmons. She's appointed to the term commencing March 8th, 2011, to March the 7th, 2015.
Madam Chairwoman, council members, I am, as Mr. Wolf said, I too am very excited to be a part of the new county system, to contribute my experience and skills to helping to administer this new system of government that we have in place. I originally, I'm from Cleveland, Cleveland proper, and I have only been practicing law a couple of years, but my experience in the employment law sector, or the employment sector, goes back, I'd say, about five years. I went to Cleveland Marshall College of Law, and during law school, I worked in the Employment Law Clinic, where we represented low-income persons with employment matters and who could not afford an attorney. So that was my first exposure to employment law issues. And I also worked for a small firm, handling a variety of legal matters, but the ones that intrigued me the most, or that I was the most interested in, were the employment law issues. And then from there, I went on to Thompson-Hine, where I've been practicing, in the Labor and Employment Group since 2008, and we represent primarily employers, but sometimes we do represent plaintiffs. That's the exception, but we do represent plaintiffs at times. Going back a little bit on my background, I started my career, I worked for an HMO. I was a union employee initially, and then I moved into a non-union position. I was within HMO for about 10, about 10 years before I actually started law school. So I'm what some people call a non-traditional, I was a non-traditional student. So I have some exposure to union issues, although union issues are not what we expect to deal with in this role. I have experience in dealing with just employment issues from the employee side and dealing with the administration of those issues and the process when there are issues between management and the employees. So I have two children. They are both out of the nest as well. Actually, my son leaves for the Air Force on Monday, so I'm excited about that. Nervous, too, but excited for him. My daughter, I have a daughter at Bowling Green.
Bowling Green?
Yes.
Yay!
Yes, I remember we met at the going-away lunch.
Okay.
When she was a freshman. I am married. My husband is with the Cleveland Municipal School District, and as I indicated, I'm very excited to be a part of this. The HR Commission, when I read the charter to understand what our roles would be, it was very intriguing to me. It looks, it sounds like it's going to be a tremendous challenge, because this is a new system, but I'm really looking forward to it, because I'm definitely a person who believes in doing things in a way that is fair and efficient and really contributing my voice to that process and working with the commission and the committee and the HR director to help see that things are done in a fair and efficient manner, so that all interests, so that there's a balance in terms of serving the interest of the county government from the management side and from all the employees that are going to be affected.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have Ms. Kathleen Palmer, and she has the term from March 8th, 2011, to March the 7th, 2013.
Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman. Rest of council, good afternoon. A little bit about myself, I have 20-plus years of working frontline HR experience as an HR practitioner, primarily in the private sector, but actually, my first position out of high school was working for what was then called the County Welfare Department, just up, right next door, as an intake clerk, excuse me. And from there, I went into the private sector and had several roles throughout human resources, kind of from the beginning, recruiting, as a generalist, then became a manager, and now finally as a director. I've worked with both union and non-union employees and understand, you know, the point of view from both, having to have gone through several labor negotiations in my career. And I am married. I live in Westlake. I'm also the administrative deputy for the Community Emergency Response Team for the West Shore. I have a grown lovely stepson, who lives in Texas, who is getting married this November. So I've got to get through that. The reason why I decided to become involved in this was, I grew up in Cuyahoga County, and I've seen over the years, kind of the county deteriorate. I'm so proud of the commitment that all of you have shown to this, what was supposed to be a part-time job.
Yeah.
Which I know, from watching most of you in action, is definitely not a part-time job. And I hope that with the HR Commission, being focused on the people, the employees, I'm hoping that we can partner together and work together, along with the Director of HR for the county, and develop some good structure around policies and procedures that, as my fellow nominee mentioned, will be fair and equitable to people, and that the employees feel that we are representing, you know, their voices in this, because I feel strongly that that's part of our responsibility and your responsibility in your roles. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We actually have two items on the agenda for this evening's meeting. One, the confirmation, also the creation of the Human Resource Division, and then that provides, in 90 days, you'll be coming back to us with a budget and basically a structure. And those will be passed under suspension of the rules this evening. All right, anybody on the council have any questions or comments? Thank you. We really appreciate your dedication. We have found this clearly not to be a part-time job, and I'm sure that this will be a lot of hours for you in the beginning, setting up the structure. All right, thank you. Now going back to the regular agenda, Mr. Applebaum, you have the floor.
Thank you. I've been asked to appear before you this afternoon to talk about some of the opportunities that we now have as a county to really engage in some reform of our procurement methodologies to gain added efficiencies in the way that we procure construction projects. This is all about things known as project delivery. I will tell you that this effort to reform procurement methodology is going on at the state level. It went on for a couple of years. It's been rough. I think you're going to see this pop up again in a parallel path. But we have the opportunity at the county, in a very streamlined way, to really move forward and do some things that are very critical to be done. What I almost insisted upon doing, though, and I apologize in advance, because I said, I don't want to come up here and simply start spewing out a bunch of different ideas without making sure everybody here had a foundation for these ideas. For the next several years, you, whether you like it or not, you're going to be seeing issues involving construction. You're going to hear terms thrown around. It's going to be confusing to you, because you're going to hear about trade contractors and general contractors and construction managers and design builders. What I wanted to do is demystify all this. I wanted to spend a little bit of time, almost in an educational format, where actually presented these ideas, explain to you what we can do today, what we can't do, what you can do in the future, and then talk about some recommendations, at least from my perspective, as to what I think you can now do as a charter county. So I'm going to do this with a PowerPoint presentation, but what I'm going to encourage you to do is to interrupt me, ask questions if something's not clear, and we can do a presentation and a discussion at the same time. I don't have to get through this whole presentation. We'll do as much as we can in the time that we have here, but I think I can get you to the key points through a fairly simple presentation today. So to start with, what are the goals of this presentation? Number one, I want to review project delivery systems. What are we talking about? What do we do today? What are the other alternatives? I want to talk about advantages and disadvantages of various ways you could do business, and how we go about selecting what we should be doing. And I want to explore opportunities for improved procurement efficiencies in Cuyahoga County, because there's things we could do that could dramatically improve how we procure, how much we spend, how much time it takes, and how much risk we manage. All those things can be vastly improved. And by the way, if you want to know how old the law is that we're currently working under, how, when was the last time we actually changed the law to make it better? The answer is, the current law we're working under, because we're under state law, it's 134 years old. We haven't changed anything about how we procure since sometime shortly after the Civil War. And I will tell you that our methods have improved since then. We have methodologies, things we could do, that if we had a proper project delivery system, we could greatly enhance the way we go about doing business. Why is this topic important? Number one, because project failure often results from selection of improper project delivery systems. Right now, we have a one-size-fits-all method. There's only one method you can use in Cuyahoga County, but in the industry, depending on the type of project you have, there are different types of methods that are better attuned to different types of construction projects. So we are limited in what we can do, and we don't have the full benefit of all the options that are out there. Prior to now, we were restricted to a single inflexible delivery system, known as a multiple-prime system. I'll get into that. In many settings, an altered delivery will definitely result in significant time and cost savings and greatly improve risk management. And if we don't change the gap between what we do now and what we could do, is going to get much worse, because we now have new technologies. We have new methods of, we have things called building information modeling, computerized methods of doing design, that we can't even successfully employ using our current methods. And I'll explain why that is, as I go through this presentation. Why do we have an opportunity here? Well, the Ohio Constitution allows charter counties to exercise home rule powers. And through your exercise of a home rule power, you can do something different than what is mandated by Chapter 153 of the Ohio Revised Code, where our current system comes from. The Cuyahoga County Charter, passed as part of Issue 6, reserves those rights and gives you the opportunity to exercise your powers, to basically create a procurement code that can do everything that I'm about to describe. So you have the ability, right now, to take some action and, for the first time, utilize or exercise your home rule powers as a charter county to do everything we're going to talk about. You couldn't do that before now. This is what's new. This is what's different. So in order to present this, and this is a surprising slide to you, I want to, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you in three minutes, the history of 4,000 years of construction history. Okay? I'm going to do it in three minutes or so, because I want you to understand project delivery formats. So I'm going to start out a little bit, maybe, you know, 3,000 B.C., maybe 5,000 years ago, and I'm going to talk about how construction was done up until the time of the Industrial Revolution. It was all done one way. You had an owner, and it could be a public owner, the state, a church, some owner, and that owner went out and secured an entity known as a master builder. This master builder, and it could be a high priest who is responsible, it could be some other entity, but this master builder was responsible for everything on the project, was responsible to find the land, to hire the workers, to develop plans, to oversee the construction, and to deliver the project at the end of the day. And there were some pretty big projects done that way. You're looking at one right there, the Great Pyramid. And by the way, pretty big project, 2.6 million cubic yards. He thinks I'm going to be long-winded. 20,000 to 40,000 workers on that project, but there's actually records of that project. There were labor strikes, there were schedule disruptions, there were procurement delays. You can actually look it up, and you can see in old texts and old forms, we don't know that much about the methodology, but we can read about the problems. But I'll tell you what they didn't have back then. They didn't have lawyers, they didn't have insurance, and the rules were very simple. In fact, the first time that we ever had to worry about legislation and construction came in Hammurabi's Code, 3,000 B.C. And there were actually, in that code, and you can count them there, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 rules that dealt with construction. One of them dealt with payment, five of them dealt with liability, and in most cases, the penalty was usually death to the builder. These were very simple rules. But this was the first time it was codified. We've come a long way since then. But basically, all construction throughout early times, throughout the Middle Ages, was all done using a master builder concept until about the time of the Industrial Revolution. The Industrial Revolution was an age of specialization. Decisions were driven by production and cost, and this master builder split up into two primary components. One component was the builder or the contractor, and the other component was the architect or design professional. And that resulted in what is known as the traditional or basic approach to doing construction, which is also known as the general contractor approach, or the traditional approach. In this approach, you have an owner. It could be, in this case, it would be the county. The owner has three responsibilities under this approach. You have to find the land, or be responsible to procure the land where you want to build. You have to bring money to the project to pay for the project, and you have to have a concept or idea that you want to have built. In the most traditional method, the owner then goes out and hires the design professional, the architect engineer, shown here as the AE, and that architect engineer, in the traditional approach, goes through and develops the design. Now you'll see these terms used, these are the traditional terms they're changing today, of what a designer goes through. So, and what this represents, if you're paying an architect 100% of his service, these percentages represent the total of his pay package that he gets for doing each phase, generally, these vary. So if you're paying an architect $1 million to do something, 5% of that would be for programming. And programming simply means taking, working with the county, if they did this, and simply getting the ideas, here's what we need to build. We need to build a building. It has to accommodate this many people. It has to have this many spaces. We need this many square feet for this many offices, et cetera. At the end of the programming phase, you have a text. It's a story. It's a series of statements, but nothing is drawn yet. The architect then goes on and does something called schematic design. Schematic design is taking that program and actually creating line drawings that show adjacencies. This is next to this. This is how it lays out. You can look at it in plan. You can look at it in different ways, but it's just line drawings. None of the design concepts are yet worked in. From the line drawings, the architect works with the owner and makes all the design decisions. These are the, this is the palette of materials, you know, this is how we're going to, you know, these are the materials, these are the various elements that we're going to build into the project. Here's how our lighting is going to be. This is the type of ceiling we're going to have. This is the type of carpet. This is the type of finishes. At the end of the design development stage, there's a series of drawings that reflect all these things, but they're not buildable drawings. They are concept drawings, and you still can't build off of those. Yes?
Then, if we go back to your very beginning portion, that as far as the programming, we should be able to track on a major construction project where that program document exists that identifies whether we need major components within the building and where they would show up ultimately as we go through this sequence of events.
Absolutely.
And if that doesn't exist, or if it's fuzzy, and all of a sudden, these things start to show up later on in a project, we should be able to track it back to either whether it was in the program document or it wasn't in the program document.
We should. And as a matter of fact, by way of example, if you took a project like the one that's going on outside, what you'll find out is, at every stage, we require sign-off, because we say the design development has to be based on schematic design. Schematic design has to be based on programming, so that you can trace it back from the beginning and make sure there is a roadmap and a path, so, because if you don't do that, you get something which is known as design creep, where the design starts to creep out, and then suddenly, your costs start to grow, and you don't even understand how scope grew. You have to have discipline. But in any event, in this most fundamental way, you go from program to schematic design to design development, and then, then you go to construction documents, and that's where the architects and engineers sit down and actually translate all this stuff into buildable documents. That's what the contractor builds off of. The truth of the matter is, from an owner's point of view, once you get done with design development, your work is over, because all your design concepts are in there. The work of doing construction documents, that is a mechanical exercise to convert all that stuff into working drawings. And this becomes important later, when I come back. After this is done, in a traditional approach, when the architect has that all done, those construction documents are final plans and specifications that you can put out for bid. So in the traditional approach, you put that out for bid, and then what happens is, you have competing general contractors who would give you a bid. Typically, it's on a lump sum basis, for what you've shown in those drawings. My bid is $10 million. Someone else will say, my bid's $9.5 million. And typically, that's then awarded to the lowest and best bid, in a traditional approach. And then, the general contractor has subcontractors that perform the work on behalf of the general contractors. So, you know, you might have a mechanical, an electrical, a plumbing, other, you know, a drywaller. Those are all the subcontractors. And during the, during the next phase of work, the architect stays on, working for the owner, reviews the work in process, looks at pay applications, you pay based on percentage of completion, and that is the way a traditional design, it's called design, bid, build, general contracting approach will occur. And by the way, you will not see this done on any county project, because this is actually illegal in the county, and I'll come back to that in a couple of minutes. An example of a project that was done that way, probably shouldn't have been done, because there was a better method for it, though. I'm not sure what I, I worked on this one. It was the Sohio Building. It's gone through a few name changes, but that project was done as a general contractor approach. 100% drawings, put out for bid, and built. The owner occupied it. Probably shouldn't have been done as a general contractor approach, though, because, quite honestly, the drawings really weren't ready. And it should have been done a different way, but that project was a general contractor project in the private sector. Now, this method has some advantages. The design is complete theoretically. You work until you get 100% design done. The price is fixed, because I go out and I get a lump sum bid, and one party that takes full responsibility is going to give me a bid, and the price is certainly competitive, because I put it to a competitive market. This method of doing business also has some disadvantages. And by the way, also, the owner is insulated from the subcontractors. The general contractor has all the contracts with subcontractors. So if, if this subcontractor has an issue because of interference with this subcontractor, or there's some kind of dispute going on there, they deal with that below the general contractor level, and the owner's not involved in that interesting warfare, or disputes, or claims, or litigation, okay? Those are all good advantages of a general contractor approach. It has disadvantages, though. This is a very adversarial way of doing business. There are actually more collaborative ways of doing business, because it's basically, you're lined up in a way that, you know, you have a general contractor. I bid low. If there's something wrong in the drawings, I come back, I make a claim. The general contractor wasn't there during the design phase, has no knowledge of any of the design decisions, and there's some issues with respect to that. And one of the issues, and I will tell you right now, this is something that owners do not understand, public owners do not understand this. It's called the spearing gap. And one way or the other, the law sometime goes back and forth on this, but this is generally the law everywhere. The owner warrants plans and specifications to the contractor. The owner says, you can bid my drawings. I warrant to you that they're adequate. The contractor is told, okay, bid just what you see. You are entitled to rely on the plans and specifications, and if there's something not shown that you are asked to do, you are entitled to a change order. That's a term you'll learn about, a change order. You're entitled to extra compensation. And the contractor is told, only bid what you see. If it's not shown, you're entitled to compensation. Now you, as an owner, would likely say, you know what? If that is the case, if the design professional, if the architect didn't draw something that should have been there, if I have to pay for it, why doesn't he pay for it? Isn't that his mistake? Well, the answer is, not necessarily, because the architect legally does not warrant to the owner that plans and specifications are adequate. The architect is a professional services provider. He only agrees not to be negligent. He only agrees to meet a standard of care, and the legal insurable standard of care in the state of Ohio is the work done by a comparable architect in the same, it's the average architect, in the same locality. So it's really a much lower standard than, in essence, being perfect. Architects don't have to be perfect. That means that the owner either has to come up with a contingency to fill that gap, or do something different. We're going to talk about that, something different you can do. Most of the disputes, most of the litigation you see in the public sector deals with issues where the contractor says, hey, I was told to bid low. I was told to bid just what I saw. There's issues and problems in the design drawings. The owner says, okay, Mr. Architect, it's your responsibility. And the architect says, no, it's not. I wasn't negligent. I'm entitled to make mistakes. You have to fill in the difference. That's known as the spearing gap. And that's something most owners do not recognize. Now, we're going to talk about how to address that in a few minutes, because you can't successfully address it right now. Of course, the other disadvantage to this, it's not, it's just a fact, is the general contractor gets a markup, obviously. He's in there managing, so if you didn't have the subcontractors, if they were working directly for you, you wouldn't pay the general contractor interseat. This method of doing business also takes the longest possible duration of any method that there is. And here's the reason. This requires you to 100% design the project, then bid the project, then build the project. You obviously can't bid it until it's 100% designed, and you can't build it until it's bid. So a typical job that may take 12 to 14 months to design, a month or two to bid, 24 months to build, that's a 30... to build, that's a 39-month total project. I'm going to show you comparative projects that take a lot less time. By the way, any design-build method takes longer than any other method we're going to talk about. Now, even if you want, and by the way, there are places where you do, where this type of work actually makes sense. There are projects, small projects, certain projects, where it's good to do them on a general contracting basis, despite the disadvantages. But we do not have the ability to do that. The reason is, that you cannot do a single prime contract under Ohio law if you are a county, or at least you couldn't do it until now, and I'll tell you why in a couple minutes. There's some exceptions. One of them that's important is the home rule of sec, exception, which we can take advantage of. And there's something called the Ohio Construction Reform Panel that has recommended that this method of doing business become available. We're going to recommend for certain projects that we be able to do that, also in Cuyahoga County. Now, what happened historically? This was the way that business was done from the time of the Industrial Revolution, really, for a long time. But what happened in both state governments and also in the private sector, is that a decision was made for various reasons to eliminate this general contractor. If you take the general contractor out of the equation, those guys who used to be called subs down there, notice how they now change to primes? They now have prime contracts with the owner. So the idea would be, okay, the owner says, I don't need the general contractor to intercede between me and the prime contractors, I don't need him to guarantee the price, I will work directly with the prime contractors, I'll take bids from them, and they will operate directly for me. Now, this has some advantages. Number one, you're not paying a general contractor's fee, you're not paying someone to intercede, to take risk, or to be in the middle. It certainly controls a phenomenon that used to be called bid shopping, and this was one of the reasons why in Ohio, this was done. The former prime contractor said, you know what? We don't want to, we want to deal directly with you, the county. When we deal with the general contractor, he will come, he will take a bid from me, he will then share it with my friend down the street, and that guy will bid, you know, number two, will bid under number one, and he'll shop back and forth. It may be okay for the county, because you get a lower price, but it's not okay for me. Now, I'm going to tell you that there are methods of controlling bid shopping and other methods of doing work, but this was one of the primary reasons why general contracting was done away with. So this method does control bid shopping. It also allows you to do something which is known as a phased fast-track option, which is to say, I can start my design, I don't have to be 100% done, because I don't have a general contractor, I can do enough of my design that I know enough to do a site clearing package. I can put out a package, have 100% plans for site clearing, put out that bid, someone can start clearing the site. While that's going on, I can do enough design from the ground up to design my foundation, put out my bid, and I can start building my foundation, and so on. Now, the benefit of doing this is you can save time, because if you take a look, because you got a head start, I start building sooner and I can compress my timeframe. The problem is, if you do this in a straight multiple-prime setting, it is an extraordinary, risky, and difficult thing to do, because I don't have one party taking risks for the whole process and managing the process. This guy out here doesn't really care about coordination issues with the contractor three steps above him. So he starts, so we've designed a foundation, but at that point in time, that builder of that foundation doesn't really care what happens two builders later. Two builders later, the design starts, and now, you know what? As you really started to move up the building, you realize there's some things I probably should have done in the foundation to accommodate what I'm putting on top of the foundation. Unless I have someone to coordinate and take overall risk and manage that, this becomes a very difficult process. Fast-track is an important thing to do, because you can save time. But if it's not managed properly, if I don't have someone in charge of the overall process with skin in the game, it can be very, very difficult to do. Here are the disadvantages associated with multiple-prime contracting. There is no fixed price. No one party guarantees my price. So by the way, if I do a fast-track job, I don't even know what my price is until I bid that last package. And at that point in time, you're committed, you can't make changes early on. If that last package is extraordinarily expensive, I can't go back and change, I can't change my square footage. There's no insulation of the owner, because all of those prime contractors, if this prime interferes with this prime, guess what? They don't have contracts, all the lawsuits go through the owner. This becomes very, you have multiple disputes, there's no external management unless you do something special, and there's very poor coordination. This is the method, by the way, mandated by the state of Ohio for all construction. And this is the only method mandated by the state of Ohio. The problem is, and I'm being a little bit judgmental here, I, Ohio is a Neanderthal multiple-prime state, all right? That's the only thing I can tell you. It's 134 years old, we're only one of three states, and probably two states that even mandate this as the only method of doing business. That's why we're doing reform at the state level. The reason is, and this applies to counties, Ohio, Section 15350 requires separate bids for work and materials. You have to break out from, you have to break out the plumbing, you have to break out the HVAC, heating, ventilation, et cetera, you have to break out electrical, and then from those, you can then have, you know, whatever else you have, general trades and everything else, but you have to have at least four packages. And that means, and these are big, major packages, those are the ones that require coordination, so no one party takes that overall risk. Now, there was an attempt, by the way, in, I think, 1997 to modify this, and, but it didn't work, it was called the Krebs Bill, and all it did is it led to the Section 15351 that says, okay, we'll let you do a general trade contract one way. That is, complete all of your design, take all of the packages, bid them separately, and bid them together. And if the cost of bidding them together is less than the cost of bidding them separately, then you can do that. Well, that is a horrendous way to go about doing things. Number one, it means you have to wait till all the design is done. By the way, on the Medical Mark Project, all the design will not be done for many, many, many months. It would have delayed that project probably a year and a half. We would avoid it, all the financing opportunities, you could never do that. And number two, the price will never be lower, because obviously, you do pay a general contractor, if you had one, to take some risks, to provide management, so that rarely will occur. This is sort of, it's a non-issue, having that provision there. So basically, in Ohio, we are a multiple-prime state, that means that we have issues with scheduling, coordinating, it's just a very difficult problem. Now, there's techniques we, that we've come, that we've used to try to manage this, we've had a lead contractor model, assigning one of those contractors to schedule and coordinate all the other ones, doesn't work, because he has a conflict of interest. If the general trades contractor has to schedule everybody else, he has his own subs, and he's going to prefer them over these, over the other trades that he has no contractual responsibility for, this, and I could go into detail, but this method simply doesn't work. A better approach is getting a, an agency construction manager, and we'll talk about that in a minute. This is the lead contractor variation, and it doesn't work. The other approach, though, is a form of construction management. So now I'm going to get into the discussion of what is construction management, because this is a term you're going to hear a lot about. We're going to talk today about the construction management and design-build. A little bit more history. This concept of construction manager probably first came about with that bridge project, that some of you, some of you know about, the Brooklyn Bridge. And I will tell you one important factor here. What happened was, the engineer, Washington Roebling, became ill. By the way, the reason he became ill is because of Kason disease. He actually went down to inspect the Kasons, he got the bends. And that's what Kason disease was, because he was down in the hole, and he got the bends. And he ended up having to manage the project using field glasses from an apartment in Brooklyn. So he had to figure out ways to communicate to the troops in the field, he had to come up with systems for cost management, for schedule management, and actually, you know, a paper system for managing the project. And by the way, who was the hero? Who was the actual first construction manager that carried this all out? I'm going to tell you, it was a woman. It was Elizabeth Warren Roebling, his wife, who actually became his eyes and ears, took the communication. She's really credited as being the first engineer and probably the first construction management team, so this is a shout-out for women in the construction industry, I'll point that out. Now, what is construction management? There's actually two versions of them. This is, this concept is legal in Ohio, it's known as construction manager as advisor. You take the multiple-prime approach, and now what happens is, and what happened was the companies that used to be that general contractor, well, they came back, they saw that this other approach wasn't working very well, because there was no one there managing, no one doing the scheduling, doing the cost estimating, managing. So they said, okay, you didn't like us as a general contractor, well, we'll come back as a construction manager, as an advisor, we'll be exalted, we're now at the same level as the architect, we're a professional services provider, but you can pay us on a fee or hourly basis to manage your work. And the benefit of this is, number one, they're there from day one. So, you know, in a general contractor approach, or multiple-prime approach, the architect simply works with the owner. There's no construction expert working side by side with the architect and the owner until you bid. Well, now this construction manager is there from day one, he's doing pre-construction services, he's doing cost estimating, he's doing schedule analysis, he's helping to do constructibility analysis. So you get, you get that. You get better control then of the fast-track process, someone to oversee it, and you have improved coordination of this overall process. There's still disadvantages, though. Number one, you still don't have a fixed price, because that CM doesn't guarantee anything, he's just providing a service. All the disadvantages of multiple primes still exist, you just have a better coordinated process. There's no fixed price, no one guarantees the job, you still don't have any insulation of the owner, if those people have a problem, they sue the owner. The, and you still have multiple disputes. Let me go back, an example of a project that was done using the CM as advisor approach, by the way, was Gateway. I was the project counsel on Gateway, we did, we did as well as we could do, you know, using a multiple prime with a CM as agent, but there were issues that could have been much better managed if we had an altered approach. So that's an example of, and by the way, the Cleveland schools, all the school projects in Ohio that are funded by the Ohio School Facilities Commission, all of them are multiple-prime jobs using a CM as agent. And that's that, the method of doing business there. What people would love to do, is they like to say, you know, we like having the construction manager there as the advisor in Phase 1, but why can't we at a point in time, ask that party to take over and actually take risk, have skin in the game, manage the process after the pre-construction phase, and become not a construction manager as advisor, but actually a construction manager as a constructor? Now, this method of doing business is extremely common in the private sector, and in most other states, this is a public sector method of doing business, both at the federal government and at the state government. It's one very important option. The reason this works so well is, number one, you still have that CM in there, working from day one, pre-construction services, unlike a general contractor who doesn't come in until after your design is done. Now you can have something here called a guaranteed maximum price, or a GMP. Now, let me explain this. On a typical project, you may go out on a typical project, and you may say, okay, here's our job, you take bids, and the bid comes in at $50 million. You don't get to look inside that $50 million. You don't know exactly, you know, how much profit, how much overhead, how much risk is in there, you can't evaluate it. And by the way, if you have a problem, where a couple very large bidders are not necessarily being as competitive as they might, maybe they're familiar with how each other bids, or maybe one of them's not interested in the project, neither one of them are, they may have a huge profit margin in there, you wouldn't know it. When you do a GMP, this is a controlled method of doing a project where you have open-book pricing, and you know exactly what you're paying for, and you can establish markets with respect to the elements. So how would we do it? Number one, you go out and you, and early on in the project, with a construction manager, you say, okay, I'm going to build a building, I'm going to build a courtroom, I'm going to build something, a court building or something, and I have something about the parameters. I know by way of example that I have a budget which is X. I know I've done enough, I know the program, I know we're going to build so many square feet, this is what our need is, we have a budget of X, we have a period of time during which we have to get that project done. At that point in time, you can go to competing construction managers, and there's certain financial information you can get from day one. Number one, what is your fee? How much profit and home office overhead will you charge me for that project? And I can tell you, in this market right now, any CM-at-risk project that you did of that dimension, you will get a fee proposal of under 3%. The typical range will be anywhere from 1.75% to probably 2.5%, 2.6% on a construction manager-at-risk project. And that is the entire profit and overhead that you will pay on that project, to that construction manager. You then say, okay, to do that project, what is your staff going to be? Show me your staff chart, and you get competitive staff charts. Show me your staff, you show me your staff, so you can look through, see the qualifications. Here's the people I'm going to have on the project, here's the number of hours they're going to expend, here is their actual direct personal expense without profit, so I know exactly what I'm paying. I can compare the staff charts, and I can see what I'm getting from Contractor A, CM A, and CM B, so I can know not only exactly what I'm paying for, I can also hold them to it later on, because I have the staff chart, and if I don't see the project staff that way, I bought that, I'm not getting it. That generally, in a project, a major project in a county, is going to be anywhere, depending on the project, from about, anywhere from about six, five to six, to maybe 10% of construction cost, it varies depending on the project type, maybe a little less than that. Those two numbers, I can get early on in the project. The actual cost of the work, that comes later on, that's actually when we actually finish designing the project, and for every component of the work, the construction manager goes out and takes competitive trade, competitive bids. So, in that cost of work, there will be a line item for, you know, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, concrete, masonry, whatever it is, and that's the actual cost of the work itself. And on top of that, there's a contingency, because the construction manager is taking risk, there will be a contingency that you negotiate, or you put out for a competitive proposal, that number is generally going to be well under 5%. So the fee, the general conditions, the contingency that you'll develop at the outset of the project will be less than 15% of the overall cost, but those are the competitive elements. The costs of the work will all be decided by actual competitive bidding. But what I can do, if I do an open-book GMP like this, early on in the job, right at the outset, I can, as soon as I have enough design done, but before I start construction, I can get a commitment from a construction manager to say, okay, I will give you a guaranteed maximum price, which will include that fee, that general conditions, here's the estimate of my cost of the work, that contingency. As you go through the project and bid out the different components of the job, and as the construction manager does the work, he is, he always guarantees that the cost will be no more than the GMP. If he saves money in the buyout, if he doesn't have to expend contingency, there are savings. Those savings revert back to the county. Or they can be used by you, if you want to, to buy additional whistles and bells that you didn't want to expend on day one, and you decided, only if I have the money will I expend it. So the savings come back to the county. If, for any reason, he does not have a good job, if it goes over the GMP, that excess cost is absorbed by the construction manager, that's the risk he takes. You pay him that fee to take that risk. This is an open-book process. Every dollar he spends comes back to you. On a monthly basis, you review all the pay applications, you don't pay for a reimbursable, you don't pay for any expense if it is not absolutely within this framework, and you get documentation for all of it. Unlike a black box, where you simply say, I'm going to, you know, do the job for 100 million bucks. This is an open-book GMP pricing, that's available using this methodology of a CM-at-risk. Now, the other advantage to doing the CM-at-risk is, you can, you can shorten a project, you can do a project in much less time. And because what you do is, you can get that guaranteed maximum price when design is about 60% to 75% complete. That's the sweet spot for doing it. You can do it earlier, but the best time is there. So remember how we first had that job, design, bid, build, which was 39 months? That same job, CM-at-risk, would take about 32 to 33 months. You'd save six months, yet you'd still have an absolute guarantee of the project, even though it could still be done fast-track, it's guaranteed at the beginning of the fast-track process, so you wouldn't run out of control. You'd have your guaranteed price from day one, you'd stick to it the whole way through. So you have both cost savings, and because you have time savings, you generally have cost savings. These projects generally save, there's all kinds of studies on this, and you could debate them, but at least 10%, and at least the percentage of time. If I'm saving six months on this project, well, that's six months of overhead, that's six months of, you know, cost for overhead on the project. Plus, you get your project done earlier, if it generates revenue, or it saves other costs, you're online earlier. That's the benefit of that method of doing business. Still a few disadvantage, there's other methods where you can get an earlier GMP, you still are in a position, though, where you have that spearing problem, because the architect is still on the other side of you. So you- So you are still between the construction manager and the architect. This is a better method of doing business, but there's even another method that you should consider. You do have to have some administrative burden here. You have to manage this job, which means you have to take a look at pay applications. This method of doing business is not available right now in the state of Ohio, and it's not available in the county because Section 9.33A of the Ohio Revised Code defines who a construction manager is, and it's a party who does not take risks, does not do this. You have the ability to actually adopt this method of doing business if you so choose. This is one of the recommendations of the Ohio Construction Reform Panel, and in the legislation that will come up once again in the budget bill, you'll see this method of doing business proposed, just like it was proposed by the Reform Panel two years ago. You're going to see this all happen again this year at the state level. There's another method of doing this, and I'm going to run out of time, and I don't want to take all the time. I will tell you that you could actually, even under today's law, you could basically do something that gets a guaranteed maximum price. It's known as offering a GMP as a financial accommodation. Even under today's law, what you could do is you can get that construction manager to agree to a guaranteed maximum price if you give him enough control over the trade contractors, even though those trade contractors work directly for you. It's a method that can be used. I'm not going to go through the advantages and disadvantages because I don't have to worry about it anymore, but this was the workaround we used to get GMPs on public jobs. And we actually did this for Lucas County. We set this up, both the Mudheads and the Toledo Walleye, the arena and the stadium were done this way. This is how we... And by "we," it's my consulting business, PNC. It's how we did the Cleveland Heights University-Hudson Library. Higley on that job did give a GMP, and that GMP saved a lot of money on the project. Interestingly, and I know that you all have... And I'm not going to get into the juvenile detention facility, but I will tell you this because it's kind of interesting. 10 years ago yesterday, and I look back and look at this, I had a meeting with Mark Scoble, who you've met, and Mark... By the way, Mark would agree with all this stuff. He would love doing all these things. With Bird Shakurian, who at that time was the county engineer, the county architect, I should say, and proposed this method of doing business. And initially, it was agreed that this is how that project would go, that there would be a fixed number, there would be the management, and there would be a guaranteed maximum price using this method. Ultimately, I think that the county shied away from that because it was a little bit too novel at that time. And I will tell you, it would have been the first project. Those other projects happened since then. So we have used that successfully, but we actually proposed it on that project 10 years ago yesterday because I found the memo. Didn't do it. County didn't do it. Can't blame them for not doing it because it was new, but it was actually a proposed method, and it would have been interesting to see what would have occurred had we done that. Let me now get to the final method I want to talk about, and this is design-build. Design-build. Remember how I started talking about the master builder concept? Well, design-build is sort of like going back to that. The owner now has one entity, the design builder, who's responsible for both design and construction. Let me show you something that's pretty interesting. I've been talking about design-build since 1985, and I've promoted it in both public and private settings. I love doing work this way, a certain type of design-build. Here's a graphic that's pretty interesting. That green line, and this is both public and commercial construction, non-residential, so major construction. In '85, 5% of all construction in this country was done design-build. Today, it's 50%. At the same time, traditional design-bid-build has gone down from 82% to 40%, and that would include multiple-prime construction, by the way. That's a form of design-bid-build. Construction management at risk has stayed about the same. So what you can see is there's been enormous growth of design-build, and there's a reason for it if it's done right. It can be a very effective method. In design-build, what happens is the owner retains an entity, a design builder. That design builder can be an integrated design-build company. It could be a joint venture consisting of a traditional architect or contractor. Most commonly, it's rarely designer-led, and you're never going to see that, probably. Most commonly, it's contractor-led, a major construction company. And all major... All the big players in construction now do design-build work. So it's someone who formerly may have been a general contractor, construction manager. They now do a design-build as well. So the design builder may be a company, and I will tell you that we do have... The Medical Mart is design-build. The design builder on Medical Mart happens to be Turner. The design builder on Flats East happens to be Gilbane. And they then retain an architect of record, and they retain contractors. I'm going to skip a few things about design-build. Right now, you generally cannot do public projects in Ohio using design-build. And the reason is that, under Ohio law, right now, until you change it, you know, going back 150 years, Ohio law says the architect has to complete 100% of the plans and specifications before the builder can be brought onboard. Well, by definition, if you start out with a design builder, you're bringing the builder onboard before you do 100% plans and specifications because he's the guy responsible to do them. So you cannot do design-build under current Ohio law. We are one of only a couple states where you can't do... Or a few states where you can't do design-build in the public sector. The exceptions are, number one, if you're a home rule entity, which you now are, you can do it. Some cities have been doing this. ODOT can do it. ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation, did it as an experimental program a few years ago, and so now they do design-build projects. Another recommendation that the Ohio Construction Reform Panel strongly recommends, why is design-build so advantageous? And by the way, I proposed, working with Joe Semperman, I actually proposed some legislation for the city of Cleveland, and now they have some design-build legislation that they've implemented. So on a limited basis, they're also doing some design-build now. Why is design-build so effective? Number one, we're talking here sole-source responsibility. It's a seamless project concept. The owner is no longer involved in the contractor-designer disputes. That spiren issue goes away because now that architect of record is... He is underneath the contractor. The owner is not between the architect and the contractor. So all of those issues, all those liabilities are shifted down to the design builder. You have a single point of communication, and now, rather than the builder and the architect always being at cross purposes, they're on the same team. They have to collaborate. They have to figure out how to work together, and so you have much greater efficiencies. You have a reduction of administrative burden because you have this team working together. It facilitates much stronger fast-track work. You can get a very early price guarantee doing this because you can get a price guarantee instead of about 3/4 of the way through the project. You can get a good price guarantee much earlier in the project, and I'll come back to that in a second. You can also do creative financing options. I'm not going to get into this right now, but, you know, in the advanced course, we can talk about how you can bring a developer in, and you can do turnkey, build-operate, transfer, sale, leaseback. These are things we do in the private sector, which are done in other states in the public sector, including for school projects. Now, the problem, though, is I would never recommend that you actually do straight design-build because what happened when we got into design-build, people got into it, but they didn't realize that there's also issues with it, which can be corrected. These are the disadvantages if you do a straight design-build job. Because I'm going to tell you about a special method that I'm going to recommend. In a straight... Yes. How much?
Well, please, you have to...
Eight?
About five, 10 minutes.
10 minutes?
Yeah.
Okay. Because this is the key. I...
You didn't go to Balliol Green, did you? And you got 10.
I do have to say, before I agreed to do this, I negotiated a time limit. I said, I'm only going to do this if I have enough time to make this presentation. So I did negotiate it. You probably weren't filled in on that negotiation.
Well, I've got 30 minutes to prepare.
All right, so I didn't... It was 30 and 30. Okay. I apologize. Let me get to the bottom line of this. The bottom line of this, you have to do something different with straight design-build because in straight design-build, you lose control of design because that designer is now working for the contractor. You want to control design decisions. You want to be controlling the design as long as you can, and you need to control the design through design development. But once you're done with design development, that's all mechanical, and that's where all the risk is. At that point in time, that can be shifted to the contractor. And that's known as bridging design-build. And that's what we're doing on Flats East. That's what we're doing on Medical Mart. That's the recommendation that we gave to the Ohio... For the state, and that's the methodology that was adopted for the state construction reform. So here's how it works. Here's how bridging works. In step one, the owner retains the bridging consultant. That is a conceptual architect who works directly with you, getting designed anywhere from 10% to 35% completed. In step two, once you have that much done, now you've controlled the design. That architect's working for you. Now you bring the design builder onboard. And in step two, and you can either get competitive pricing from the design builder or use that same GMP concept, get a guaranteed maximum price, which is what we did on Medical Mart. Now what happens in step two is the design builder agrees to take those conceptual drawings to finish the working drawings and to build. And that bridging architect stays on as your consultant to oversee those working drawings and process for conformance with the design intent. So you have your cake and eat it, too. You can control design in phase one. You shift all the risk in phase two, and you have a coordinated collaborative method in phase two. And by the way, examples where we've done this, we did this on my company... I did this on PNC Park and Bush, the first stadium's ever done this way. Tremendous in terms of time, saved times, and really worked out very well. And obviously, we're doing this on both Flats East and the Medical Mart. Now, to get to the Medical Mart, we had to go through, as you know, this whole methodology of bringing in a private developer, and it was a very convoluted way to get to this kind of a construction solution. Now, through some legislation, you could adopt a code, and you could do... Use these methods yourself. They will save you substantial time. And by the way, if we hadn't used bridging design-build for the Medical Mart project, we would never have been able to complete, start construction last year. We would have never been able to take care of... Take advantage of those Recovery Act funds. We still wouldn't start construction, probably, because we're still not through design. We still wouldn't have a guarantee. You'd never have a guarantee. You can now emulate this in the public sector. So I had more, but you're right. I'm long-winded. What I would like you to do, and I want to do at least just this much, to me, and this goes along with some other recommendations, but you should take the time to look at these methods to, in my judgment, to adopt the legislation you need. It would be, you know, a procurement code, but it can be a simple procurement code that allows you to use these methods and then have others work on how they would actually implement them. Those are the recommendations.
Yes, I did get... Seeing how you got a commitment on this side, I think I got, hopefully, a commitment from you that, at the next Economic Development Council meeting, that we would... You would be able to be there, hopefully, if your schedule provides in two weeks, so that for those of you who want to see the impact of how this... Just to focus to the design-build piece without necessarily the historical precursor, we can focus just on that in that next meeting on two weeks from yesterday, if your schedule permits, and I know we talked about that idea. What is your estimate as far as roughly time saved and money saved by using the design-build concept?
Okay, so if I took that first... And I... If I took that first job, that was a 39-month job, that 39-month job would turn into using design-build, bridging design-build, that would turn into a 29- to 30-month job. But the time savings could be far greater. I will tell you that the time savings on Medical Mart are even greater than that. We did comparative side-by-side evaluations. Let me give you one other example. There's a school that is... That was knocked down by a tornado. It's Lake Local School District. It's outside of Toledo. That was the tornado that came through. Four people were killed, destroyed their school. We are... Even though you normally would have to do that project using multiple prime, we've declared urgent necessity because you simply have to get that project built back. There's insurance funds, et cetera. We did two comparative schedules. We did the typical, traditional schedule, and then we did a side-by-side schedule using bridging design-build, which is what we're doing there. And the time savings, basically, it would have been three years to get that project done, the kids back in school. We chopped off a year. And that means kids getting back to school. They have no place to really be. It's just huge for that community. Now, we're using the doctrine of urgent necessity, you know, where you can only probably do that when you've had something like a tornado come in because you have to have the justification. There may be some special legislation that comes... That also comes out to support that conclusion, but that's an example. And the way you would know this is you simply go to projects early on. We did this on the Florida Marlins job. Do a comparative schedule. Get someone to say, okay, we have options. Show me the schedule for doing it with method A. Show me the schedule with doing it with method B. And if you can chop that type of time off, time is money. Every day, you don't have people mobilized on a project. You're saving money. It's not for every project.
And the economic impact that you would anticipate that you would be able to yield for the county by moving projects at a faster pace? Any expectation?
Well, assuming that the project itself is important to do and has positive economic impact, you're obviously moving that impact up in time. But I would, you know, we... There are numbers and studies that were presented by the Ohio Construction Reform Panel. I was not as aggressive as some. I mean, there was some testimony down there that I frankly thought was hard to justify. You could justify it in certain cases. And Mr. Miller will remember all these studies down there that were presented down there. But some of those studies talked about 30% savings. I think that's pretty aggressive. You might be able to get them, but I would feel comfortable saying that you will at least get, you know, something well north of 10%. And in many cases, you could get up, you know, to the higher numbers. But that's only the construction savings. That has nothing to do with getting your project online. You know, if you're doing, let's say, a hospital or something, you know, getting your project online, getting into a newer facility, starting the economic impact, starting the new jobs earlier, you have all those impacts as well.
Thank you.
Madam President, and my colleagues, in some of the discussions that we've had on other topics, the opinion has surfaced that county home rule is not as robust as municipal home rule because there are different sections of the Constitution. And I would be interested in the Law Department's opinion as to whether we have the freedom under county home rule to adopt these alternative construction methods in spite of the way that the Ohio Revised Code reads.
Madam President, to Mr. Miller, that's something that I'd have to take a look at. I can't answer that, unfortunately, for you right now. My inclination is to say, yes, we would have that ability, but I would need to research it. And I have begun research on the extent of county home rule.
Yeah, the partnership of Morales and Connelly will proceed on it. I am interested in also... We've been sort of doing these parallel research, so we'll take a look at it. I'm interested in the question also.
Madam President, my hope is always that we can do more rather than less, but I just want to make sure that we can do...
Madam President.
Yes, Mr. Fistero.
If I may... Well, first of all, I want to thank Mr. Applebaum. Both Councilman Schron and myself had kind of jointly invited him to come down here and give one of his brief presentations, but he is a... He really is a fountain of information on this, and I thank you for this. He was not being paid by the word, by the way. He volunteered to do this, and we appreciate it. He is one of the countries, as you can probably tell, he's one of the country's foremost experts in this area. And I think our intention is, I just wanted to express to council, we have a certain role in oversight. We're trying to do that with the Juvenile... Jointly between us. Trying to do that with the Juvenile Justice Center, and that's a legitimate role to play. But we also... The corollary to that is, we've got to fix it. We've got to show, how can we avoid these? And that's what the public expects, I think. And this is one method that I think has some promise. And my question to Mr. Applebaum was, though, that is there a rational reason that Ohio has been so late in establishing these as alternatives for construction projects? Is it because they just didn't get around to it, or they weren't forward-thinking, or is there either a, a real cogent argument against what you're saying, or is there an interest group that tends to lobby against it? Can you, do you know?
Yes, I know. Let me, let me address it this way. And I'll, I'll say this in two parts. First of all, historically, the debate was a much simpler debate. It was multiple prime versus single prime, sort of a general contracting versus multiple prime approach. The debate was never couched in terms of, it really didn't broaden to construction management at risk, design-build the way it should have. And as you can see, in 1985, only 5% of construction was done that way. So it was a narrower debate. Number two, yes, I will say that there is, in Ohio, historically, the, the parties who have not supported these other methods of doing business, you know, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing contractors, who wanted to have direct bid access, you know, preferred the multiple prime approach. Now, I will say that in other states, if you talk to MEP contractors in all the other states where these new methods have come about, you know, the reaction has been, well, it's fine. You know, if you put other controls in to protect us. And there are other things that can be done, there's some protections that are there, responsible contracting protections that you can add to this equation to take care of those issues. The other thing which is very different, though, is that historically, drawings were done, very, you know, they were done in such a way that it was a deliberate process. Now we have what's called building information modeling. We're drawing on a model. We're actually creating immersive models, putting everything in 3D models, and the ability, and you want the contractors to come in and have input early on. You don't want to wait until the drawings are done. You want their comment, you want their input, you want construction folks, you actually want to do shop drawings on those models. So the new models of project, of, the new techniques we have demand that we get into design-build and other methods. It's way, way beyond what I can talk about today. But the technology is changing to put much more pressure on our being able to have these methods. And the other thing is, we now have a lot of history. Over the last 25, 30 years, we've been doing these things over and over again. We've been getting much better at them. Design-build was not necessarily as good until we started doing more of the bridging design-build. So we fixed the problems, and now we have much better techniques than we used to.
Madam President.
And Mr. Schron.
Madam President, Mr. Applebaum, do you think that, under our home rule powers, that we could just start using these new methods, or do you think that we have to, to pass specific authorizing legislation?
We took a look at that, and I think it's our judgment, and I won't get into the reasons, but I think it's our judgment that you still have to go one step further. I think you still have to have authorizing legislation, because there's, there's some language in the Charter right now that I think reverts, continues to revert back to existing law until you do the authorizing legislation. So I do think you need another step.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Mr. Schron, Mr. German.
Thank you. Madam President, when, I'll start with the positive. When this legislation is passed and the tools are put in place for economic development, does this mean that we are excluded from using the others, or is this just one more tool that we provided to the county to better do the, do the functions of building?
That's a great question. And let me, let me say this, I am not here, you know, don't get the wrong impression. I'm not saying that multiple prime is the wrong solution in every case. There are projects where it actually makes sense to do multiple prime. What I'm saying is, get more tools. What I didn't get into, had I actually done my full four-hour presentation that I was trying to do, you would have seen, I would have shown you an actual matrix with a factor analysis where you kind of look at different factors and decide what's the right method. When we do major projects, we line up, you know, all these different decision factors, and we line up all the project delivery methods, and we pick which one is right for that job. Because certain project delivery methods are right for certain types of jobs. And it's a, it's a whole analysis that you do. The point is, one size does not fit all. You'll still have multiple prime, you'll still have CM as agent, these are just more tools that fit more needs.
Right, Mr. German, did you have a question?
Madam Chair, I, I was really fascinated trying to follow this. Most of the way through, I was following it, but getting to this guaranteed maximum price when they haven't even designed it yet is some concept that I haven't been able to, just doesn't compute in my, my head. But I'm guessing this is computer models based on historical backs on similar type buildings, or, you know. But let's just say, I'm confused, and I'm intrigued to find out.
Why don't we spend some time, it's, it's because it's impossible for me to shoehorn that all into this brief presentation. If we, if we spent some time, I'm sure I could satisfy you that, that, that there's a reasonable method for getting this done.
Thank you.
Mr. Apple, I really appreciate, I mean, on behalf of the council, we really appreciate, and we appreciate you coming. We certainly could not afford your fee per hour, so we glad, we're glad that you volunteered to come in and speak with us. And you'll be back with Mr. Schron, and I'll try and make it, because it was a fascinating presentation, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Madam Chair, if I may, to Mr. Applebaum, if you could please be so kind as to provide me with your presentation via email, and I'll make sure the council gets a copy of that.
I will, I will do that.
Thank you. All right, thank you. We now have number, item number four, discussion of the internal audit. Is that Mr. Wright Park Price? I was going to say Mr. Parks, Mr. Wright Price. Okay.
You know, in black and white.
One tight.
I got it, I got it.
This is the worst thing I've ever seen.
Here we are. It's all yours.
I know, we got, because we got this other guy. Yeah. Mr. Price, you have like 10 minutes.
It's like the Supreme Court, the little red light's going to go off, I'm sorry.
Did you print that long? I can't either. I'd print on the other side, I take no more recycling. But this I got, and I'll take this and recycle.
You all have copies of the PowerPoints.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Another District Nine resident.
Yes, Orange Village. Good afternoon, Council, County Associates and guests. My name is Mark Parks. I am the acting fiscal officer for Cuyahoga County, Executive Andy Fitzgerald. And today, in 10 minutes, we're going to go through 40 slides and teach you all about internal, external auditing, reappraisal, and the Audit Committee in 10 minutes. So here we go. You have the slides in front of you.
Oh, wait a minute, are you reappraisal also?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, you got 20 minutes.
Oh, I got 20 minutes? Now I'm encouraged, okay. And it's funny, I speak at these luncheons all the time, and a lot of times, they'll have like steak, it's like surf and turf, and then they have the accountant speak after lunch, and then they turn up the heat. So, you know, everybody's ready to take a nap, and I feel, you know, that pressure again, but here we go. We're going to talk about three key initiatives coming out of the fiscal office, the external and internal audit, the Audit Committee, and then the reappraisal, the 2012 SECNEO reappraisal. Now, prior to serving as the acting fiscal officer, I did serve time on the Finance Committee for the Transition Advisory Group. And one of the resounding recommendations of that group was that we spent a significant amount of time educating the newly elected officials on the financial processes. The county government has a lot of interconnected complexities when you talk about the financial enterprise. So we're going to talk about a couple of things that will affect you as we speak. Right now, as we speak, we have the external audit going on that's being conducted by the Auditor of State of Ohio. And the, okay. What the Auditor of State is going to do is they're going to opine on the financial statements of Cuyahoga County for the year ended December 31st, 2010. And basically, what they're going to do is some substantive testing, they're going to interview some people, they'll talk to council members, they'll talk to the executive staff, they'll talk to some employees, they'll review the statements, they'll get confirmations from external sources, and they will make an opinion on our financial statements. They want to make sure that what we present from a financial standpoint is accurate, based on generally accepted accounting principles. So what your responsibility is as a management person, or, and we are now on this slide here, the one that says, management knows responsibilities for governance are responsible for, and these are your responsible, responsibilities. Being knowledgeable and complying with laws, regulations, contracts, and grants applicable to the county, identifying other audits or attestation engagements, and taking timely appropriate steps to remedy fraud, illegal acts, violations of provision of laws, regulations, contracts, or agreements. Now, we have a new position of strength with the county government, because the Inspector General has been implemented. So that's another level of scrutiny that we have to look at our financial statements. So the finance, the Inspector General will look primarily at fraud and potential fraud, and they will disclose that to the external auditor for their reviews, so they could calculate that into the decision on the statements. The, here's the timeline and the details. The Auditor of State plans on completing the audit by July 31st of 2011. So as I mentioned, they're already in process. Our goal is to have a clean audit, also known as an unqualified opinion. And with that, that's saying that our books are presented fairly, and that everything is up to par, as it should be. The positive thing with the clean audit is that it will allow us to have a higher credit rating, and for any bonds or debts that we want to issue, we get better rates. So it's imperative that we have a clean audit. One of the great things about having the Auditor of State doing our audit is that we're going to save a significant amount of money in the tune of $250,000 to $300,000, compared to the price in the previous years where we used a external IPA or a private firm. Now, I want to make sure that we are clear on the difference between the external and the internal audit, because I'm going to move quickly into the internal process. External audits are external firms, in this case, the Auditor of State. They're looking at our financial statements, and they will opine or make an opinion on those financial statements. Internally, we will have our own internal audit, who will look at processes, compliance, they'll look at financial instruments, and make sure that we are doing what we should be. So the first part of that internal audit process is to create the Audit Committee. And here on this slide, I've just referenced the part of the Charter that addresses that, it's Section 1101, County Audit Committee. And it says, the Audit Committee will be comprised of the county executive, the fiscal officer, the council, and other officers' departments, et cetera. So, I'm sorry, that is, the Internal Audit Committee will provide internal auditing for those groups. The committee will consist of the financial officer, who will be the chair, it'll consist of the executive, and a president of council, and two representatives from the community. Now, one of the things that the Audit Committee is going to be responsible for is appointing the Audit Director. And the County Audit Committee will make recommendations, recommendations to the council, and the council will appoint that person. Some of the qualifications are, that person should be a certified internal auditor. Let's see. They should have five years of experience, and they should, I'm sorry, I'm on the, a different slide. Let me just go here. Okay, so the Audit Committee will appoint that person, and their duties are to, as I mentioned, hold on, let me stop. Okay, here we go. The function of the Committee is very serious. The Committee done right will bring a high level of credibility to the county government. The reporting of the committee should not be hampered by any functional or administrative reporting requirements. The Committee must be free to represent what occurs. And when I say that, the Committee will report to the county executive, the Committee will report to the council, but you want to make sure that they feel free, that they can express and talk about what's really going on. So if they see a problem, they need to feel open, that they could go and present that to the council or to the executive, so that if we have some problems, they will come out. The duties specifically for the Audit Committee as defined by the tag, Transition Advisory Group, is, they'll, six, the executive and council are fulfilling its oversight responsibility, they'll look at financial reporting and policies and procedures, and they verify the integrity of the county's financial statements. It talks about independence, but our auditors are directed to us from the Auditor of State, so we really don't have to worry about independence. Once the state auditor recommends that group, then they're already independent, so that part is taken care of. The Audit Committee wants to make sure that we are in compliance with legal and regulatory requirements. They look at audit plans, financial reporting, and the annual audited financial statements. Risk management, policy improvements, procedures for complaints, and then they also look at contracts, review reports, et cetera. Now, the independent audit department is independent appraisal function established by the company, county, to examine and evaluate its activities. And I'll skip some of these due to time. Okay, so here's the requirements for the Director of Internal Audit. They shall be the head of the Internal Audit Department, they shall be a certified internal auditor, or a member of the Institute of Internal Auditors, or a similar organization, and they shall abide by the Code of Ethics of the Certified Internal Auditors or a similar organization. The Internal Audit Director shall also interview and make recommendations for hiring the Internal Audit Staff. They will prepare their budget, develop fees for their work, and guide the internal audit process according to auditing standards. Okay, so here are the action items as they are referred to. For the council, we need to form an audit committee, which is first. We need to schedule a meeting with the Audit Committee and external auditors, hire a director of internal audit, and then create an internal audit department.
I, I think you stand correct on that. 1102 says there shall be a Department of Internal Auditing, so that already exists on the Charter. We probably have to set some guidelines for ordinance, but I think the department is created in the Charter.
Right, I didn't, did I say they need to create the department?
Yeah, we don't need to create, that's one department we don't need to create.
Right, right, exactly. You, you just need to have the people in line to participate on the committee and set it up, but it's already in the Charter. Okay. So that's the portion on the audit. Any question on that segment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you for your fast presentation. Just a curiosity, in the past, you mentioned that we haven't used the Auditor of State to do our external audit, and now we're saving substantial funds and doing so now. What would be the rationale for going outside the state?
Well, the, the state is who dictates who does the audit, so they do certain audits throughout the year, and then they assign a different independent audit firm to do the audit on their behalf. So Deloitte and Touche has done our audit for the last 10 years, so the Auditor of State decided that they would do it this year. decided that they would do it this year. So they have no profit motive, so their costs are significantly less. All right. Any other questions on the audit portion?
Yeah, I think, I went to a meeting and presentation, so up until this year, you had, was it Deloitte before?
Right, Deloitte and Touche, correct.
The last, what, four or five years?
Last 10.
Yeah, okay.
Last 10 years. Yeah, so their audits were in excess of $700,000. Okay. So we're gonna go briefly over the two-
Yes, Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Madam President, just a follow-up. Is there, is there any assurance that we're gonna be able to continue to have these state, have the state do these audits and save us the money or might they say, well, you gotta go back to using the private auditing firm?
Well, that's at their discretion, but they, in the past, and I believe we have some of our audit staff, they did the audit for a number of years before. Steve, do you know how many years they did that in the past?
This is Steve Blesky, Director of Accounting. Good afternoon. The Auditor of State performed our audit for many, many years prior to 19, I believe it was 93 was the last year. At that time, one of our county commissioners became the Auditor of State and it was a situation in which it would have been a difficult situation for him to audit the county. So they, they turned it over to a private accounting firm. The Auditor of State only has limited resources to do audits and so they didn't have the manpower to do the audit for Cuyahoga County and the audit for the city of Cleveland. Prior to this point, the Auditor of State was doing the audit for the city of Cleveland. They are not this year. So that, since they had staff available, since they're no longer doing that audit, they had people available to do ours. We suspect that they'll be here for a number of years, hoping at least five and maybe longer.
So the next area is the 2012 Sexenio reappraisal. And again, I just put some of the codes. This is from the ORC that referenced that process. Every six years, we are required to do appraisal of the, every property in the county and 2012 is our year. Again, some additional code relating to that process, naming the auditor and in this case, the fiscal officer as the assessor of those properties. Just some statistics about what we have in front of us. The number of properties is 524,852 and as you see, they are broken down into residential, agricultural, commercial. So you see we have over 450,000 residential properties, 29,000 commercial, all of which have to be appraised in this 2012 reappraisal. There are basically three primary valuation methods. We have the cost approach, just understanding what the cost is and basing the method on that. You have market estimates, looking at comparables and sales comparisons as well. Another part of valuation is land rates, establishing land rates for different areas of the county to determine how much the land is worth. And then, once all of that is done, there will be ratio studies to figure and measure the accuracy of the 2012, excuse me, 2012 proposed values, once they are in fact in place. Approval of those values will be done by the Ohio Department of Taxation and equalization. They will approve, once it's all done, the state will approve that and then the taxpayers will receive a notice of their proposed values. Now, the, one of the extra steps that happens at the end of the process is that the residents are able to come to different locations and dispute their values or ask questions. So historically, it's been a number of locations. I don't know, Lou, can you speak? How many locations have we done in the past? Like 61 different locations where residents can go out and talk about their values if they had a problem, cuz typically, you know, the values have gone up. So a lot of times, residents would go to those sites and comment or have a hearing, not a hearing, but a discussion about their values. This year, the approach may be to use each one of your districts and have the meetings there. So that makes it a smaller area to cover, so you only have 11, 11, and then you could work with us perhaps and bring your constituents into the site and get to talk to them as well as they get their values discussed in that environment. So that's how that would work. This year, with the new county executive and the reappraisal, what is exciting about this is that Cuyahoga County will be the first to conduct this reappraisal using this private sector business model. Typically, in the past, we've had an outside vendor who did the appraisal and it was quite a bit more costly. Cuyahoga County has decided that they will enlist and hire contractors to do a portion of the work and will be able to do this process at a seriously discounted price. The county will use, as I mentioned, a combination of our governmental employees and we have a very highly skilled core of appraisers in-house and then we'll have contractors who'll do the rest. The process will be managed by the fiscal office and they will be paid on a per parcel basis. So there's a fixed cost for the contractors, so no matter how many contractors we have, the cost is gonna remain the same. So there, the cost is based on a per parcel basis. So our goal is to get 35 contractors, but you may have some who will work harder than others, so maybe we'll have 50 or maybe we'll have slightly less.
I think Mr. Rogers has a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Parks, I just had a question on the contractors. When, when you say contractors, are we talking about individuals that are appraisers?
These will be individuals, yes.
And have we started hiring or contractors?
We posted a RFP in the Plain Dealer, I believe it was the 15th, 16th, and 17th of February. The final day for submission is March 11th and we have a process in place where we should have all those contractors ready to go at the end of April.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam President, is that also being posted online as well as the Plain Dealer?
It, it was posted on our website and then we had a press release that referenced it as well. So, and then there, it was on the Legal News and some of the contractors, this is a very close-knit group of people, so the buzz is out there that this RFQ is out there. Okay.
Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
I'm just wondering how many, if we're talking 35 to 50, how many people applied so far? Well-
Well, the period is not over yet, but we had a pre-conference and there was 48 people there. The departmental staff had talked to another 28 who did not attend the pre-conference meeting, so we anticipate that we will have enough response on that.
Uh, Mr. Brady?
Thank you. Very much appreciate the, the presentation and understand there are time limitations. I mentioned this issue, this part of this issue a couple of weeks ago. This is really, again, a big deal, very complex, a lot of the things that are discussing, we certainly don't have time and it's not anybody's fault. This really needs to be in front of some kind of a committee thoroughly, I, I don't know which committee, I don't have the answer to that. I'm not advocating anything, I'm just saying that there's really a thorough discussion that needs to be taking place about this, this, this huge reappraisal of all the property in Cuyahoga County and everything that's gonna be involved in it. And it's gonna have to be, you know, it's gonna, another one of these things. We are going to have to find time and find people to, to, to have this discussion. It wouldn't necess, it wouldn't be an ongoing, you know, an ongoing issue, but there has to be, there has to be time to thoroughly discuss this up, upfront before, before it starts, not occasionally as it, you know, as it proceeds.
Uh, Mr. Schran?
And to follow on with Mr. Brady's comments, it's my understanding that there was a firm that looked to actually do this entire project also and some of the concepts that they were alluding to were to use some technology. How do we, as a county, look to use things like iPads and data collection and automated devices and things like that, because that's potentially a place where we could actually bifurcate this into, into multiple pieces and start to bring some of that, so we get the full value of where these things go, because I know that there's, there's some current software to help appraisals that's, that's out there and some powerful tools and also, again, the data collection devices out there. And I, and I don't know whether we're, we're looking to contract or use that kind of, that kind of program, but I know that that was laid out there.
Okay, we have our technicians coming up to help you with that question.
Madam Chair, council members?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Jim Hopkins. I'm the Director of the Real Estate Appraisal Department. I started my employment with Cuyahoga County back in 1986 as a data clerk in the appraisal department. In 2002, I was, through attrition, asked to take on the directorship role of the Real Estate Appraisal Department. Mr. Schran, thank you for your question. That's an excellent question. Mr. Brady, we, in regards to timing here, this process, due to the complexities of the county government taking over and the new form of county government, this reappraisal, all this talk and all this planning should have been done eight months ago. Okay? Should have been done eight months ago. We have an excellent staff, middle management people. I've been through four reappraisals myself. I've been through four updates, state mandated reappraisals, four state update appraisals as well as my five key staff members. They have all had a number of years in revale experience. So we bring to the table the ability to get the job done and we've had it done in the past. In regards to technology, Mr. Toledo here is one of those gentlemen I mentioned that has been with the county equally the same amount of time. I believe it's 26 years, going on 25 or 26 years. Joe is our IST expert and I'm gonna have him address Mr. Schran's issues on the technology.
Great question, as Jim said. One of the issues that we wanted to avoid, fusing real state-of-the-art technology such as iPads and things of that nature is that, that could actually potentially cripple things. We do use technology quite a bit and we've been through two revales so far, 2000, 2006, and we have infused technology and we do keep adding technology. We are using oblique imagery and our GIS system that we already have in the county. To use technology in lieu of actual field, physical field inspection, we're, we're not gonna go that route. Other counties are kind of dabbling with things of that nature. But it just would be, for such a short time period we have, I think a lot of the technologies such as transferring data back and forth to handhelds and whatnot could actually potentially be more crippling than beneficial.
Madam President, as a follow-up, but why not consider potentially going to an outside third party to do that so that they can coordinate, so you folks can concentrate on, on, on the business at hand and let somebody else help you support with that technology and, and yes, it might cost a few more dollars, but at least we will be upgrading ourselves to the standards of where things are going.
Again, because of time constraints, it's, it's, it would be an issue. I feel as though it'd be an issue. I've been with the county for, you know, 24-plus years and I've never seen a system go in without, without, without any hitches. It, it just doesn't happen.
Mr. Brady?
I'll be, I'll be brief. It's my understanding that sometime back in the, in the 70s, and I, I could be off a little bit, but I believe that former everything, George Voinovich, when he was the county auditor, really began to build a professional staff of people to appraise property in the county in a way that was really outstanding and that that, that, that group of people, many of them have probably retired at this point, but I know that there are a lot of people in that department that have been there a long, long time and really had a reputation for many, many, many years of being very good at what they did. And I'm concerned about, you know, where we are now and, and that we don't lose the expertise and, and what I think, you know, was an outstanding model for appraising property as we move into a new era. I know technology's changed, I know a lot of things have changed, but there were an awful lot of things that this county did right regardless of who the former auditor was. And, and through a series of auditors, there was a stable staff in that department that was very, very professional and very good at what they did for the most part. And so, you know, I'm concerned that we, that we don't, we don't, whatever's, whatever's left of that, we don't lose it in trying to save money and don't lose control over, over the quality control that I know at least used to exist there.
A lot of that staff is still in place. One of the technologies that they brought in in the 70s was multiple regression, computer-generated appraisals. That, to this day, is still being used. Technology is being used. A lot of these people that were the pioneers of these things so far are the, like, for example, they call CAMA, Computer Assisted Mass Appraisal Systems, were in fact our mentors. And-
Well, I, I'm available tomorrow morning. I was, can cancel what I was supposed to do. I mean, I could meet with you either tomorrow morning and kind of give us reappraisal, I don't know if Ms. Simons is available or whoever else is available on council, that we could have a, a meeting with you and, you know, kind of, like I said, give us reappraisal 101 and get started. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I would recommend that as this ad hoc committee is formed, that before the, the actual work of appraisals takes place, that, that you're, you're on the right step in having at least a download here. But to follow on Councilmember Schran's statement, you know, we're, we're already eight months behind the eight ball. I think that we would be, it would be prudent for us to understand better what other technology capabilities are out there from third-party providers who do this on an ongoing basis, being sensitive to the fact that we don't wanna re, we don't wanna invest in a six-year project, you know, hardware resources, but there are groups out there that do this. And I would like us to have a presentation or two from some of those providers so we can fully evaluate and make the best decision as we set the, the policy as to how these appraisals are gonna be conducted, cuz event, effectively, council sets the policy. So we wanna make sure as we set that policy, we understand all the options available to us.
Right, 10 o'clock tomorrow morning and I think Ms. Simons is gonna be available and anybody else, as long as we don't have a quorum, that we'll, we'll kind of get started on the, on the basis. Well, I'm canceling my historical luncheon tomorrow, so.
Well, I, I just wanna verify one thing if I could or clarify, I should say. In the eight-month, mentioning that was reporting to the state of Ohio and the state of Ohio waiting for our plan. It had nothing to do with the planning and looking forward to the task ahead of us. We were well on, well on course, we're still on course. It was a reporting requirement by the state of Ohio to the state of Ohio in regards to how we were gonna complete our plan.
Maybe we should use 9 o'clock better?
9:00 is fine. Where would you like to have it?
Oh, well, I'll be in my office or we'll call your office, wherever.
Very good.
Is it easier, is it easier for us to come to you in terms of information and?
It depends how many people you're gonna bring with you. We have a small office, but if you have a larger-
Probably just two or three of us.
Appraisal department would be fine on the third floor.
And you're what, third floor?
Third floor.
Okay, we'll see you tomorrow. We'll see you tomorrow at 9 o'clock.
Thank you.
Right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Now, let me just say in regards to this, as many of you know, I'm an independent insurance agent. We use the county data daily. I mean, multiple times daily. I used it today when I talked to a little lady on, on Charles Avenue in Parma. The information that the county already has on the website, you just go to Cuyahoga County Auditor, you, you put the address in and actually you, you take the, the whole sheet. It, it, there, there, there is occasion where the homeowner may, has, maybe has remodeled, changed some of the features or added on the house and sometimes it's missed by the county. But by and large, there, there's a, a pretty accurate database on, on every, every house. I, I, I think it's, it's pretty remarkable. It's to the point where, now, I don't know the, how the computer does it, but there, it's to the point that in the insurance industry, you could be quoting someone's car insurance and the computer in the background will give you a homeowner quote and you haven't even asked them a question about that. So I don't know how that happened. So, I don't know how that happens, I'd be interested in finding out more about that. I just can't make it tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock. But I do want to tell you that the, the data that Cuyahoga County has collected over all the years of these, these different parcels is pretty accurate.
And maybe to address, John Hunter from the ISC, to address that point, those third parties you're, you're speaking of, they actually get their data from the county in our database and then reprocess it and put it in their product. So we are the originators of all that data, and all the data that's collected.
Thank you, gentlemen, we're running on some time restraints here. We will see you tomorrow at 9 o'clock, and thank you very, very much, Mr. Parks. We skipped number eight on the agenda, is there any mislanced committee reports? We'll have an opportunity to do this at the end of our meeting. Is there any public comment? Did anyone sign in?
No, Madam Chair, no one signed.
Okay, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we'll adjourn for 10 minutes and start a regular meeting. Ms. Schran?
Yes, I do have something for the good of the order, and would ask that an error be corrected during the 6 o'clock meeting on the agenda. I inadvertently disrespected Councilwoman Simon by not putting her in as a sponsor for item number 17A, and also, that part is considered, should be consideration of an ordinance of council for first-reading adoption under suspension of rules, so if someone could be so kind as to make a motion to amend the, or the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, that would be appreciated.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, no disrespect taken.
Okay, is there, yes, Mr. Miller?
Madam President, for the good of the order, I would like to command our County Executive for his public support of the Safe Surrender Program, in, in light of, of what came out of Washington, and, and the same for, for Governor Kecic. And I would like to suggest, Madam Chair, that, that you might consider asking the chairperson of the appropriate committee to, to lead an effort to make sure that the, the county does what we need to do so that this program can continue, because I think it's, it's very important for, for the good and health of our communities.
Thank you. All right, is there anything else for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn the work session? So, all right, all in favor, say aye, motion to adjourn. All right, we'll be back in like 10 minutes.
Yes, sir.
I know, we got to take a potty break.
I know, we need our own rest.
No, I asked you after the birthday.